All right, thank you Ms. Clemmons. I hope that you're hearing that we're putting strategies into place, right? We're hearing these complaints and we just don't want to go out and just try to do everything all at once. We want to create a strategy to make this last, right? You don't want to have to clean up the alley, come back next year, clean up the same alley. We're trying to be smart about it, right? So I hope that tonight you're hearing that we are creating strategies and plans to get these things addressed and have it last. So we talked about neighborhood cleanup. And just to go back to what the mayor said about neighborhood organizations. A lot of times we'll come in and we'll have a neighborhood cleanup, right? We'll clean up a certain part of the city. But then we leave and who's overseeing that spot? That's one role that neighborhood organizations can play. When there's an organized group of citizens there, then they can make sure that that actually stays clean and they can flag us down if there's something else that needs to happen. Go ahead, be quiet. So we're putting strategy and a plan in place. So next I want to invite up Chief Huber to talk a little bit about public safety.
Good evening, everybody. I have Chief Thompson, Tony Thompson, of Washington Park Police Department here with you. And I'm going to explain why he's here with us, here with us today. But I want you to first to this, give yourselves a hand. Can you give yourselves a hand? And the reason I actually give yourselves a hand because I thought about something in our community. Our community is one big puzzle. And I myself am a resident of this community, you being residents. We all are pieces of that puzzle. But it's a puzzle that's not complete. And each one of us have to represent that piece and put our pieces in the puzzle. Well, what do you say, Chief? Well, I'm the chief of police, so my puzzle is law enforcement. My puzzle is keeping you safe, keeping your community safe. We all know that Rome wasn't built to the day, but we have to start somewhere. Now, there's a few updates that we have, just to let you know what we're doing. I know a lot of you have seen the sale of single cigarettes, individuals hanging out in front of the gas stations and the liquor stores. Well, for the last few months, we've been working with the mayor, who's the chief liquor commissioner. And what we've been doing is myself, along with officers in our department, detectives, we have been going to these establishments. We have been doing investigations where we had individuals sell single cigarettes. We collected evidence. And as a result of that, the first week, I believe, we had eighteen thousand five hundred dollars worth of fines on selling single cigarettes. I think the following week, we had twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars worth of fines in single cigarette sales. We recovered three weapons from the stores. Some people's licenses were taken from them, they may have... You know, a brief too, Charlie, and Mary. But also, and to show you that it wasn't in vain, the third time that we went out, we only had two thousand dollars in fines. But what did they tell you? They got off the telephone. They stopped doing what they were doing. And what we're sending a message to, it happened before, but it's not going to happen again. So that's one thing that we're doing in our community, being a piece of the puzzle. The next thing we're doing, the mayor talked about youth. Ferguson, I always say, why reinvent the wheel when somebody else is doing it? Chief Nick Davis of the Ferguson Heights Police Department started what's called the MECO program. It's the Metro East Connect Enforcement Program, Orientation Program. They have a graduation march the second. That's comprised of students from fourteen to twenty-one. We have five kids in our community that's involved in the program. In total, I believe, it's twenty kids altogether. This was the first year. We have our officers that's working in the program, that's doing instruction. And we're looking at that program growing. We're looking at reaching out, not just to our city, but other communities. So that's one thing we're doing as far as our youth. Also, what we found is, I've been in talks with Chief Dotson of the San Luis City Police Department last week, as a matter of fact. And what we find out, we used to say that the criminals would come from Missouri to Illinois. Well, since our clubs have been closed down at a reasonable hour, what we find out now, we have a rash of car thieves and carjackers that have been going to Missouri. That from over here, going to Missouri, bringing the vehicles back here. As a matter of fact, I'm sure some of you saw the news. Our officer, Richard Sharp, he was driving down Caseyville Avenue. And one of the stolen vehicle, the individual that we've been looking at, T-bone, ran into him. Thank God he's okay, he's out of the hospital. But we're all seeking charges on that individual. He's in custody now. But what San Luis City is doing, we combining resources to see if we can attack that head-on. They're asking also, we got more talks, they're going to offer some officers to come out and assist us in the enforcement of that. So that's one thing that we're doing now. Chief Thompson, he's here with me. The reason he's here, one thing we realize, we're right next door to each other. And sometimes we have to work together to get things done. What we've been doing for the last three weeks is a multi-jurisdictional aggressive enforcement effort. Where we joined, I think, the officers from Washington Park, they said, we're the same. We're after you, so I'm saying... For the last three weeks, these officers have volunteered their time to come together with myself and Chief Thompson. And what we've been doing is hitting the streets of Washington Park, hitting the streets of East St. Louis with the limited resources that we have to keep your city safe, to keep you safe. So at this time, I'm going to introduce you to Chief Thompson. Chief Thompson.
Feels like I'm just opening doors to the church out the back. As Chief said, and Madam Mayor, she, they talked about community. So the community's got to be bigger than Washington Park. It has to be bigger than just East St. Louis. Because if you're in East St. Louis and you want to get some good rice, where are you going? Orange Rice House. So if you come to Orange Rice House, I don't want you to pass it up because there's four or five people standing outside that don't mean any harm to anybody. So the team that we developed is called SLICE, a street-level investigation criminal enforcement. And they already asked the officer to stand, but I'd like Sergeant Anderson to stand, who is actually the commander of the team. He puts everything together, he puts the call out. In the three weeks that we've been on, even though we're saying three weeks, I think you've only been on the street five times, is that right? Four times. And those four times, I'm going to give you some brief statistics. Ten weapons, over three hundred grams of cannabis, twelve warrant arrests, ten felony arrests, eighteen citations, twenty vehicles towed, one aggravated battery arrest, three unlawful use of controlled substance, ecstasy, cocaine, and cannabis, one no valid registration, one armed robbery, one possession of cannabis by Illinois Department of Corrections, one FBI wanted person arrest, five arrests for possession of a stolen vehicle, and probably the most important, twenty-five hits on Facebook saying that the jump out horse ride.
And we just like to thank you once again. Congratulations, Chief Thompson. This is just the beginning of us working together. But once again, we can't do it without you. Thank you.
All right, so next I'm going to invite up Hayden Bland. And you've probably seen him around at some of our town hall meetings last year. He was able to come in, take pictures, and also, you know, take, record the town hall meetings. We finally got him on contract so that he can be here consistently. And he's more than just, I see his role more than just a photographer, videographer. He comes up and he documents everything that's happening, right? As the mayor said, we're making history. And I always say, if you don't document it, it didn't happen, right? So we want to make sure that we're updating citizens, those people who couldn't be here tonight. So we want to make sure that this information is accessible to those who weren't able to be here. So, and the thing about Hayden is that he came to us with a vision of what his role could look like. So we didn't hire him on a contract just to show up, take some pictures, but to actually create an overall vision of how we can use this position to further engage our citizens. So I'll have him tell you a little bit more about what that looks like.
Hello, good evening. I'm Rosa Bland, and this is my husband Hayden Bland. We're with Highosa Productions. We are here to give you some information about the East St. Louis YouTube channel. As Jessica said, some people may not be able to be here. They can go on that section and see clearly what's happening at the beginning. So I'm going to let my husband explain to you what's going on.
Okay, thank you. The mayor has done her best to keep the citizens informed about the affairs of the city. And we salute her for that. One of the new tools that the citizens can utilize is the City of East St. Louis YouTube channel and the mayor or the city's Facebook page. There's very good information there. You can find town hall meeting dates. If you did not get to attend the city council meetings, you can view them on the city's YouTube channel or the Facebook channel as well, in high definition. All you have to do is go to the city's YouTube channel and subscribe. From then on, you will get notifications when new videos are posted. And also, I will ask the mayor to see if we can get a link to that on the city's website as well. Also, you can go to our website. And on the news page, under the client list, click on the City of East St. Louis, and it will take you to the city's YouTube channel. On Facebook, just enter the mayor's name, of course, and all of their city's information. We have business cards available at the desk. So as you exit, you are more than welcome to get one. Our website is on the card, which, as I stated, the link is there. And we thank you, and we thank the city for having us. And any questions that anyone has, we want to reserve it. As Jessica said, we want to keep things moving along. We'll try to answer any questions, if you have any for us, after the town hall meeting.
All right, we got them from behind the camera tonight. So you heard him say "high definition," right? He's all about quality. So we want to get some quality stuff out there. And another thing, the YouTube channel won't just have town hall meetings. It will also have city council meetings. We also want to post some different informational videos. So when things come up, we can probably have the mayor give some announcements. We want to put out some public safety information. So there'll be lots of different information that we're going to put out through that YouTube channel. Charmaine, you can go ahead and get your information pulled up here. So next what I want to do is invite up someone. Is Charmaine in the room? Okay. I want to invite up someone who's not a staff person at City Hall. But we want to highlight the good things that are happening in our city. Who here has heard of the I M E S T L magazine? So we were very, very excited when that came to our city because we don't have a whole lot of positive information out there about our city, right? But there's a lot of positive things going on. A lot of times, that's not what the media really wants to pick up on. So we have to create our own media, right? So Charmaine took that into her own hands. So she's going to share a little bit about her vision for the magazine. And we also have a couple magazines to give away tonight. So I'll let her get her information out. And while she's doing that, I want to make a couple of quick announcements. On your programs inside, it says "save the date." So I just wanted to point you to that. We have our unsung heroes coming up. That's going to be at City Hall on the 28th. So we hope to see you there. We really want to celebrate heroes in our own community. And not just the usual suspects, but people who don't often get recognized, right? There's a lot of people doing some amazing things in our community, and we want to celebrate them. So we hope these are not for that. Are y'all set?
Hello, everybody. I'm Charmaine Savage, and I help East St. Louis the Magazine. I am a product of East St. Louis. I was born here, I was raised here. I graduated from college, I joined the Navy. Served twenty-one years after duty. And I also worked... Also worked civil service four years for the Navy. I'm in San Diego. And by that time, my husband and I had grown homesick enough. So we came back home to East St. Louis in September 2014. And we have always planned to come back home to East St. Louis. And the timing was right. And around the same time, I was growing extremely frustrated with some things that I was hearing about my hometown. And, you know, people say things about East St. Louis that were just not familiar to me. I know a different East St. Louis than what people say all over the world, really, about East St. Louis. And that was very frustrating to me. And I wanted to be part of changing hearts and minds about my hometown. This is the East St. Louis that I envision. I'm sure you all are with me. And that's the East St. Louis that we want to show the world.
So we have some time for some questions. What we're going to do is, if you have a question, raise your hand, and we'll call on you. We don't have time for a few. But like I said, if you write your questions down, then we will be able to get those. We're going to write them out so that they can be documented and everything at our next town hall. So Ms. Moore?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to make an announcement. The city has a surplus property listing of approximately twenty-two hundred parcels. These are parcels that we don't get property taxes off of. They're there, and we're expected to maintain them. And frankly, we can't. We are asking you, if you have a vacant lot by your own, call in. See if that property is in fact a city-owned property. We will make a deal with you. It won't be the seven fifty that you have to pay minimum on that accounting. We'll make a deal with you to get these properties back on the tax road and to know that there is someone there who will maintain those properties. So give us a call. You can call myself, or Ms. Phillips, or the mayor's office. Detroit is there practically every day that I see her, at least. So call us, please do. And kudos to everyone who gave presentations, you did a wonderful job, and...
Ms. Phillips, did you have something to add?
I did work at copy of a few of the listings. I don't have a lot with me, but I did print out a few for him.
Okay. So while she's passing that out, so questions related to what you heard tonight?
I can tell a lot of them. I've never heard of that magazine, where am I getting it from?
So where did she get the magazine?
I have to say that. I did bring... Did you want to do some? Can I just...
Yeah, we'll give some here.
Okay. So I did bring some copies of the magazine. Unfortunately, I don't have enough for everybody to get one. We passed them all out, actually. We're going to get more, the March issue I should have. And I anticipate bringing copies to the council meeting on the 10th of next month. But normally, you can pick up the magazine at City Hall. You can get it at Pearls, you can get it at Louis's Pastries, at the old medical building at forty-six oh one State Street. I know there are some other locations that I'm forgetting. But I do have the locations listed on my website and on the Facebook page. The Facebook page is I M E S T L Magazine. And on Twitter and Instagram is I M E S T L Mag.
And we do have planning, we do plan on having more copies at our March town hall meeting also.
Oh, there are location in the south end of the magazine.
Is there a south end location for the magazine, Charmaine?
I need one.
She's looking for one, so we'll pull it to the side and give her some ideas on where that should be. Any other questions?
Yes, I would like to know... I want to read it to the south end, which is the opinion. Is there going to be any reliable funds for the East St. Louis township to provide for a person who's, I mean, in the process of looking for a loan? Or can it be like it used to be, under the general assistance fund? Will that reallocate?
So funds for people who are looking for employment?
Going to have Councilwoman Hamilton Dean speak to that?
Yes. Are you a senior?
I'm fifty-six.
Fifty-six. There's an A A L program, A R P program, at East St. Louis Township, sixty-seven fifty-five State Street. There's a representative there, I believe, she starts at eight, and she's taking applications there. So if you need employment, I think it's only twenty hours a week though, so it may not be more. But we do have other resources and jobs available that we reach out to local businesses to hire seniors.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Hamilton Dean. Do we have any more questions? Right here, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, my question is to you, Mayor. Are we going to have a town hall meeting that we're going to discuss the deficit and the plans that we're going to have to try to get rid of the deficit for the city?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that question. We've... The first round of town hall meetings that I had, we did address the deficit. We talked about it in detail. But we will have another town hall meeting to discuss how we plan on getting out of that. That's still in the process. We're still talking about how we can get rid of this, this five-point-seven million dollar deficit. We're still working on it. But as soon as we figure it out, the citizens will definitely know, okay? Ms. Parent?
My question is, what part of this town will I G O U S for the highway connections to the new bridge? You know, like the rumors, they're going this way, they're coming from that way. Is it settled yet?
It's not settled. They are still in the presentation stage. It has not been set. That's all my community tells you about that. But we as citizens have some say about whether or not we want these roads and highways to come through our city. So I'm going to encourage our citizens, and we do have a panel of citizens that consists of some of our citizens with I G O U S. But I'm going to encourage our citizens, as these presentations are coming, I know that they've done one or two meetings in the community already. I'm going to encourage us to get more involved in that so that you determine, we determine, what happens here in City of East St. Louis. Well, I can get some information, but that's a big question. We'll post the, where you can get more information about the reasons. We'll post that. In the back. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll come right back to you.
The man was asking about the jobs. There is a big health job there on Thursday at JJK Center. And he said, I'm sure the city was aware of that.
Did everyone hear that?
I said, there is a job there on Thursday at the JJK Center. It starts at eight o'clock in the morning until noon. And there promises to hire on the spot there, Thursday at JJK.
All right. Jim, what in the back?
Yeah, just a, just a, speaking a little bit about what Ms. Parent was saying about the ramps that I G O U S is supposed to... It seems like, well, from my understanding, they're trying to build ramps that pretty much can bypass commuters going through the city. So I was just wondering how you felt about that.
We don't want to do anything to bypass our city. Right now, we're in the process of trying to rebuild our city. So of course, everything that we do, we want it to be strategically aligned with rebuilding the City of East St. Louis, not forgetting about the City of East St. Louis or bypassing the City of East St. Louis. So that's my stance on that.
To Mayor, first of all, my name is Doris McGilvery, calling you.
I'm great.
And I'd like to know, who are members of the panel? And is it too late to become a part of the panel?
I don't, I don't know all the names of the members on the panel. There are different people on the panel. I would have to check to see if it's too late.
Okay, because I, there was an initial meeting at the community building. I was unable to make it, but I did contact the facilities and Charles gave them my information and never received any information at all. I did go on the website for St. Clair County. There is information on there talking about explore East St. Louis. And the key word in that sentence, it said, "explore East St. Louis." But my understanding is going to bypass East St. Louis. And we're talking about, we're in a deficit situation, five-point-seven. Some of those dollars need to come right...
Okay. We'll address that as well. How can you get on the board? Or if it's too late, we'll address that as well. Any more questions? Comment.
Ms. McGilvery and Ms. Parent have been members of this community for a long, long time. They sit on many, many of boards, and they save this community well. And either way, I would feel a lot better sitting on that panel than I G O U S is.
Thank you, City Manager, for that. If we don't have any, Chief?
I'd like to say to the community, I actually, that's going to do it there. Every tenth is a go-St. Louis marathon that's coming to East St. Louis. Last year was a success. A lot of organizations came out and supported. East St. Louis turned out to be the best. And if you guys could come out every tenth of Sunday morning, go up before church and line up on a River Park ride, and they run the River Park ride in the Halloween afternoon back to the city of East St. Louis, we would really like your support. And it's a treasure to see. I know a lot of you guys don't understand, but that's the grace of the kings flying there. And you know, you have a guy coming, wheelchair, his place, and glad to see you from every tenth and eight o'clock in the morning, we'd love you guys to come out and support us on River Park ride. And see the go-St. Louis marathon.
Thank you, Chief. Let's get fit, but let's get fit before the marathon. Okay. I just want to take the time now to acknowledge some of our clergy. Pastor Brandon, you're standing right there. Pastor Lozbe, so great to see you here. And do we have any more clergy? Oh, yes. Right here, Pastor? Yes. So good to see you. We hosted one of our town hall meetings at your church. And you were here. Yes. Yes. And so, thank you for allowing us to be here. Even in your absence. Do we have any more clergy here? Pastor Hubbard? Pastor Kiel and...
Pastor White.
Pastor White. Pastor Benson? And we just want to thank each and every one of you for coming out this evening. Pastor Benson is who is also our emergency services disaster director. We want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. I'm going to hand the mic over to Jessica, now.
Just a couple announcements. Who here got a phone call about this town hall meeting? Okay. Who here got an email about this town hall meeting? All right, so that's why we have those sign-in sheets out front. We want to get your information so that we can make sure that we give you information that you need. So today, a couple of people brought up the concern about this highway, right? So we want to look into that and get that information back to you. Those are a couple of ways that we plan on getting back to you. So we plan on emailing you that information about how you can get involved in making that decision about the highway. So if you haven't signed in, or if we don't have your phone number, or we don't have your email address, make sure that you do that before you leave. This is the way that we're keeping connected with you, all right? Our next town hall meeting is going to be on March twenty-first. That's on the back of your program, or inside your program, where it says "save the date." And it's going to be about preparing for emergencies, emergency preparedness. So that'll be the topic for the next town hall meeting. So we talked about neighborhood organizations. It's spring, it's time to get started on that. So we're going to have a meeting about how to start a neighborhood organization in your community. Forget the date, but the date is in March fifteenth is the date for that. It's going to be held at City Hall at six o'clock. We also have a table outside for a new program, martial arts program. Seth, do you want to stand? Do you want to say a little bit about that program? Wanna say a little bit about that program, Mark?
Uh, hi guys, uh, I'm Seth Hamilton, I actually just moved into East St. Louis with my wife about a month ago. Um, and our, our little baby boy. Um, I'm here with one of my students, actually, Devon Madison, if you stand up. Come on with me. Um, so, I actually am a professional fighter, um, I just moved in, or my wife and I just moved back from Nicaragua. Uh, I've had seven professional fights in four different countries, I've won five out of, or five of them in the first round, I finished. Uh, thank you, I'm, I'm offering these classes to teach uh, martial arts in an effective manner, not just like mystical, providing tai chi stuff, but things that actually work, uh, based out of wrestling, or saying jiu-jitsu, boxing, kickboxing. Um, I, I can go through my credentials, but that's gonna take a while, and I'd rather get to the point of it that I, I want people to learn, or not only to be educated on how to defend themselves properly, but also to get physically fit, to work on nutrition and diet plans, to get, or to get healthy. And all of our, the classes are cheap, they're only twenty dollars a month, and if someone's unemployed, it's only ten. And all the money goes to support our competition team, we have, uh, we have several youth that compete across the states. And Devon, along with four other people, are actually gonna be going on a, a trip this summer to do sport, to do uh, I'm sorry, combat sports uh, promotion. We're going to be working on developing combat sports in our industry also within West Africa. They'll be doing a sixteen day trip, uh, going to Senegal, uh, in tandem, or in tandem with people from four other countries that are world champions. So not only are they going to be helping to work with people here in East St. Louis, but across the world. And they'll be being, or they'll be training with some of the best people that there are on the planet, so. Um, if you guys wanna sign up, we've got the table back there, um, just give us your information, we'll give you a call, and we'll let you know how you can get involved.
Um, and I'm gonna invite the mayor out to give some closing remarks, and then we will have our pastor praise out.
Well, citizens of East St. Louis, I just wanna thank you for coming out tonight. Um, as you can see, we are utilizing our resources to the best of our ability. We have a lot of work to do, we're committed to that work, we're not gonna paint a, a pretty picture when it's not pretty. However, we're gonna let you know when we're moving forward, and we are moving forward, we are making progress, despite how it looks, we want you to continue to stay tuned. Just like Ms. Clemens said, we wanna be held accountable, so that we're not running from accountability. Just know that you have an administration that's concerned about you, that's concerned about your well-being, that's committed to the growth of this city, that's committed to developing relationships, sustaining those relationships, that's committed to the economic development that we do deserve, that's committed to re-imaging and rebranding the city. I just wanna take the time out again to thank Ms. Charmaine Savage. Let's get her around a little bit. There are many citizens, there are many East St. Louis citizens who, who no longer live here, who want to come back, just like Ms. Charmaine Savage has come back. The time is now, the time is now, because great things are about to happen in East St. Louis. And it, and it may be in smaller increments, but it will be great all the same. Thank you so much for being here, thank you so much for supporting, we want you to continue to support. We want you to continue to come to the council meetings and the committee meetings. Make sure you bring a neighbor, because we want the numbers to grow. The more we have involved, the more accountability we have, and the more ownership we take. So thank you once again for coming, we appreciate you, we look forward to seeing you on next month, or before next month. Thanks for being here.